All right, good evening. It's six o'clock, so we will call this evening's Planning Commission to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Avelia.
Here.
Vice Chair Roof.
Here.
Commissioner Berlin.
Here.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Sakerson.
Here. Thank you. Commissioner Berlin, would you lead us in the flag salute, please? Thank you for that. Agenda reviewed. Would any of the commissioners like to revise the order of agenda items this evening? All right. That moves us right along to our community comments and suggestions period. This public comment period is an invitation to members of our community to present issues, thoughts, or suggestions on matters that are not scheduled on this agenda for tonight. So if you have, you know, comments on things that are on the agenda, if you could leave it to that period, that would be great. Comments should also be limited to the matters that are within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. So if anyone in the room would like to come up and leave a public comment, right now is the time. If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. It doesn't look like we have any takers in the room tonight. Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to make a general public comment?
At this point, we have no raised hands.
Thank you. All right, I will close this public comment period and we'll move on to item six, which is our written communications. I saw one come in earlier. Was there any additional items?
No, just the one item regarding item eight C.
Thank you. Moves along to item number seven, which is our consent agenda, which is approval of minutes of our September 17th meeting. Is there any questions or concerns?
Yeah, I kind of had a question. I don't usually about the minutes, but when I was going through, sorry, I'm gonna get a little closer. When I was going through the the minutes for public hearing, item eight A, is I, I kind of took notes on the topics that I thought we had asked for staff to, that we had agreed in our motion to take a look at. And I just wasn't seeing some of them reflected in here, so I was just wondering how the language kind of got determined, because this doesn't totally represent, I think, what we were talking about. So I had, I had a question on that item. We've never had that before, so I'm new of what that means.
Good evening. Planning Commission Andrew Perez, City's Planning Manager. And you raise a good point, Commissioner Roof. I do think we can amend the minutes to kind of reflect what's written in the staff report for tonight's hearing. It talks about the three items that the Planning Commission directed staff to investigate and then bring those back next meeting for an approval.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think if there was a closer connection, that would make more sense to me.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or concerns on number six? All right, can I entertain a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the September 17th meeting. Pending amendments that we'll review. I mean, I don't know, I don't know that we can approve them actually, or I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do.
Yes, you can either recommend approval with the additions and just leave it up to staff to make those, or bring those back at a future meeting by continuing this item to our next agenda.
Yeah, I'd be more inclined to move, carry these forward and not approve them at this time.
So do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, let me amend my motion. I'll make a motion that we continue the minutes of the September 17th meeting pending further amendments by the staff.
I'll second that. Thank you. Can I have a vote, please?
Commissioner Berlin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sakerson?
I'll abstain since I was not here.
Chairman Avelia.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to our public hearing items. The first item, I think we have three tonight, so the first item is eight A, which is consideration of CUP 24-001, a new 68-foot wireless telecommunications facility, and finding that this action is exempt from review under SEQA pursuant to State Guidelines, Section 15303, Location 959 Valley Road. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Good evening. My name is Shayna Groban. I'm the Assistant Planner. And today I have for your consideration, an application for a new wireless telecommunications facility. All right, so the new wireless telecommunications facility is proposed at 959 Valley Road. This parcel is bound by Los Barros Road to the north and Valley Road to the west. The application is for a conditional use permit and is also subject to the city's telecommunications facility's citing and permit requirements. This is considered an allowed use in this zone with a conditional use permit. This project was reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee, who recommended approval on September 16th, 2024. The project, the proposed project is located on the same parcel as St. John's Lutheran Church, which is within the Public Facility Zoning District. These images provide a street-level perspective of the project site along Valley Road, including the existing water tanks, the storage sheds, and the substation equipment. Within the parcel itself, the church facility is in the northern half with a conservation open space parcel just across Los Barros. The southernmost edge of the property represents the end of the Arroyo Grande city limits. There are no properties within city limits located to the west, south, or east of the parcel. As mentioned previously, there is a San Luis Obispo County-maintained substation directly south of the proposed project site. And there are agricultural fields directly west of the project site. The closest residential use is a single-family home located about 450 feet away from the proposed facility to the east, and that is a county property, not a city property. The site plan demonstrates the general location of the proposed project area in the southernmost half of the parcel. The, this parking lot area and driveway is only accessible from Valley Road. The northern parking lot is only accessible from Los Barros Road. They are completely separate parking lots. The applicant proposes the installation of a new wireless communication facility to be concealed as a 68-foot faux pine tree. The monopine will be contained within a 900-square-foot lease area to be accessed from Valley Road. The application does include a new 30-kilowatt diesel generator with a 210-gallon sub base tank to be contained within the enclosure area at the base of the tower. And the project also does include a new eight-inch base plate designed to raise the entire enclosure area above the 100-year flood zone. As most of you know, four alternative sites were considered for this coverage gap by the applicant, one of which was denied by Planning Commission through Resolution 24-2395, which led subsequently to the submission of the current application you're reviewing today. And so that's the information I just went over. All right, I know it's a little bit confusing, so these are two separate images. On the left, we have the overhead site plan demonstrating the location of the equipment within the lease area. So it's an overhead view of the 900-square-foot lease area. And it includes service lights, a Knox box, the swing access gate, a transformer, a generator, and other equipment. And then the image on the right gives an elevation view and demonstrates that eight-inch base plate that I described previously. This next image demonstrates another elevation view of the project proposal. And I can go back and forth between those two if you want me to give kind of a perspective view. All right, to go over some of the project specifics, from the base plate to the bottom of the branches will be 15 feet. And then from the base plate to the top of the panel antennas will be 63 feet. So then if you're paying, you're following along, that's an additional five feet from the top of the panel antennas to the tip of the actual monopine itself. As previously mentioned, the lease area is 30 feet by 30 feet, and there will be three equipment cabinets within the 900-square-foot enclosure. Here are some more project details as provided by the applicant. I'll give you a second to review these in case you have any technical questions or you want to follow up with this information. All right, this is an overhead view of the monopine itself. So not an overhead view of the enclosure area, but of the actual monopine structure. And it demonstrates the antennas and the sector directions. So you can see those three arrows, and that is going to be the direction that those panels are pointed in. All right, as part of the project, the applicant does propose the construction of a 15-foot-wide, non-exclusive access driveway to extend from Valley Road to the facility, as well as a non-exclusive tech parking spot designation on site. Additionally, adjacent to the proposed leased area will need to be replaced and partially rerouted as a part of the project's scope. And the project further necessitates the inclusion of two new 15-foot-wide telephone and electric utility easements to contain the undergrounded utilities connecting to the facility. So the telecommunications citing requirements state that photo mockups of the project site should be provided to demonstrate before and after construction. I've only provided the after-construction photos in this presentation, but those before photos are also available for you as well. So image one demonstrates the tower, oh, also. So these, these renderings were submitted and they demonstrate the project from multiple vantage points. That's illustrated with an index map and key for identification in the bottom-left corner of each of the images. So that kind of bolded red arrow in the bottom-left-hand corner is demonstrating where we're viewing from the perspective. So image one demonstrates the tower looking southeast from Valley Road. And then image two demonstrates the tower looking southwest from Los Barros Road. Image three demonstrates the tower looking from, looking northeast from Valley Road. And then that final image is east from Valley Road. And just to clarify, within that chain link fence towards the right, that's the county-maintained substation. That's existing equipment. That is not proposed. And on the image on the left, the metal, within the metal enclosure, that's existing substation equipment, not proposed with this project. The telecommunications citing requirements call for information regarding existing towers of the same or similar design located near Arroyo Grande. The first example submitted by the applicant is 304 Reservoir Road in Arroyo Grande. And then the second example submitted by the applicant is 1230 Luther Way in Salinas, California. And the reason why this one was submitted was because it is a monopine located on a church property. Now I will review some of the relevant requirements. The citing requirements state that structures shall be compatible with surrounding architecture or replicate natural environmental features. The requirements further state that design shall be in scale with surroundings and antennas should be concealed and screening should be provided as a visual buffer. According to the requirements, stealth design is considered innovative and prevents any equipment or antennas from being visible. Regarding landscaping, the applicant has proposed that the landscaping be chosen by the church constituents, and it will surround the equipment enclosure fence. This slide demonstrates the colors and materials that the applicant proposes for the monopine. The Architectural Review Committee reviewed the aesthetic options presented and moved that the church constituents should have the final say regarding the monopine appearance. They did approve the project as proposed, though. All right, so the radio frequency emission statement demonstrates compliance with Federal Communication Commission, which is required by the citing requirements. The analysis was performed based on general population maximum permissible exposure levels, which were established by the FCC. And the maximum refers to the peak field strength to which a person may be exposed without harmful effects and with acceptable safety factor. All right, and I've provided three of the most relevant figures to go through today. The report has two additional ones, which we can review as well, but I thought these were the most relevant. So figure one demonstrates the maximum exposure at ground level. All right, and figure two demonstrates the maximum exposure at the adjacent light level of 20 feet. And then finally, figure three demonstrates exposure at the antenna level, 57 feet in the air, and then within 84 feet from the face of each panel. 57 feet, 84 in front. There are no buildings or structures within the face of the antenna, and therefore, the radio frequency report concludes that the anticipated calculations for the proposed site results in exposure levels that are below the FCC's most stringent general population MPE limits. Regarding SEQA, the state requirements for SEQA states that the project proposal is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under the Class III exemption, which applies to the construction and location of limited numbers of new small facilities or structures. The proposed project is a new small facility in an already-developed area, and it's comparable in scope and function to those structures identified in the state exemption. Based on this information, it's recommended that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit CUP 24001 and find that this action is exempt and find that this action is exempt from SEQA pursuant to section fifteen three zero three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, uh it's, it's up there. Questions? We have questions from the Planning Commission. Commissioner Berlin, would you like to start?
Let me turn my mic on. Thank you, Ms. Groppen. Appreciate that. Lot of information to process. But um bear with me. I did my homework, so you're gonna get a lot of questions. One of the things in the staff report, not what you said tonight per se, but i- in our packet, was um one of the rules for determining when a gap exists is part of the criteria for determining whether the site is warranted or not. And so, one of the first questions I had, I see the applicant um included an analysis of coverage that currently exists, but I didn't see anything about demand. So, and you can defer to the applicant if it's not your question. But, but the question I have is, have you seen or did the applicant present information about not just the gap that exists, but the demand?
So, referring to demand specifically, the applicant didn't provide that information to us. Um in terms of coverage justification, we, the requirements really just ask that that, that that is stated, that they are requesting coverage because they would like to fill a gap. And that's pretty much viewed as sufficient in terms of our citing requirements, but I definitely will defer to the applicant um and see if they've done any studies in terms of requests or demand from their customers.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious, cause there's a, the, the reason I ask that, I don't know what this term means. There is no bright line rule for determining when a gap is significant. I don't know what a bright line rule is, so maybe that's a So, so again, I'm not trying to make trouble. Clearly, there's a gap in coverage, but I, the letter of this paragraph says that there need to demonstrate not just a gap in coverage, but a demand. And so, so my question is that. Um and, and what is a bright line rule? If you'll expand on that.
Yeah, the bright line rule is essentially that there has not been precedent set that states specifically what does it mean to have a gap in coverage. There's not a threshold that has been determined on a federal level at this point.
Okay.
Um so it's kind of up for interpretation what that means, what that gap in coverage looks like and so, yes, I'll let, I'll let Verizon speak to
Yeah, fair enough.
The applicant speak to them.
So if the applicant's gonna address us, maybe they can address that when they get there. Thank you for that.
I'm sorry, are they here? Can they address it right now?
Oh, that'd be great. If, if the applicant would kindly step forward and answer that question, if they're willing to. Anybody from Verizon here?
Yeah, I believe the applicant's online. We have um, Madison Lascalzo. So if there's someone else from your team that would like to speak, let me know, but that's who I have allowed permission.
Thank you.
Madison, if you can hear us, you should be able to talk now.
Technical difficulties right now?
Yeah, we may need to come back.
Yeah, that's fair. Okay, thank you. Uh we'll just carry, carry on if, if we may. Shayna, on, on the bottom of page nine on the staff report, there's a paragraph that says state legislator adopted AB fifty-seven, and then later in the paragraph it says Governor Newsom in late twenty-twenty-one signed AB five thirty-seven. Is that one and the same? Is that just a typo perhaps? Uh, not that it matters, I'm just curious if the evolution of state legislator went from fifty-seven to AB five thirty-seven. And not, again, not that it matters.
I would assume they're different, cause it's different years, but
That's, I know. A- and again, maybe it's irrelevant. It, it, the, the point of the matter is w- what you spelled out there. Okay, so, so let me skip that one. There's, on the bottom of page ten of the staff report, the city cannot prohibit telecommunications services or impose moratoria. And in the middle of that paragraph, it says um it says, let's see, in the middle again, second, section two fifty-three C protects state and local authority to manage the public rights of way and require fair and reasonable compensation from telecommunications providers. My question is, how is that fair and reasonable compensation determined? A- a- and who determines it? The, the utility company or the city? And what is the basis for the compensation?
Uh, very good question there, Commissioner Berlin. Um so this relates to telecom facilities within the right-of-way. Um so, I can address your question, but it wouldn't apply to this application because it's on private property.
Okay.
But generally, um this city would charge a license agreement to the facility to have essentially renting space within the public right-of-way. Um and there's been, you know, legal precedent set and kind of what's fair and reasonable, like
Market, market conditions type of thing?
Per square footage basis.
Okay, and because this is in private versus a public right-of-way, it's whatever they work out with the, the leasing.
Exactly.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Um, moving along to the very bottom of that same page ten, and it says, uh, and this is a part of state law limits on cities authority, which I understand that's a lot of the background is both what the feds and the state says we can do as a city to regulate or at least monitor what kind of facilities are coming in. So, the bottom bullet point says all wireless facility permits issued by the city must be effective for at least ten years, absent public safety reasons or substantial land use reasons. So my question is, i- if problems arise, say five years down the road, uh, a land use thing pops up, say, say AG Creek floods, and that substation or adjacent parcel gets washed out and something changes there. Again, I don't know what the circumstance could be. If there's a problem that arises in that ten years, do we have a chance to go back to the utility company and say, we've got a problem, we need to address it? Because your facility is not, uh, again, from a safety or substantial land use reasons, one of those two criteria. Our hands are held for ten years, but if something arises, we do have an opportunity to remedy with the applicant? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, so essentially, the, the actually, the ten-year mark is really put in place as almost a protection for the city, um because otherwise, the conditional use permit runs indefinitely with the land. So that ten, ten-year mark is put in place so that the city at the ten-year mark can say, you need to reapply, you need to conform with our new regulations. Um so, prior to that, if there is some sort of emergency circumstance, um there can always be amended conditional use permit that um renegotiates the terms if need be. Um and typically speaking, if there's something like a flood or some sort of environmental disaster, um most of the time, the utility companies would like to address that with us, because it means that it has an impact on their ability to be effective in their job. So typically, I haven't seen that as being a problem, but it's something to think about.
So you, you posture it more as a defensive mechanism, and actually is to the city's benefit that's as there. And at ten years, you relook it and decide if there's problems.
Yes.
But, but again, if there was some big crisis that arose, the utility would wanna fix it, as well as the city would say, hey, we need to do something here. Okay, fair enough. Okay. Thank you for that. I see the next page eleven, top bullet point. The city cannot require wireless permities to post an escrow deposit covering the costs to remove the proposed facility. However, performance bond requirement, uh securing removal of facility remains permissible. So, I see that, and then I saw in the resolution, we did put that kind of language in our permit conditions to cover the cost of removal. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, and so the way that that works out is if they decide, or we decide it needs to go, the dollars and cents, labor, everything that's included with demo, demolishing that and taking it away falls on the burden of the applicant.
Exactly.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Sorry to cut you off here, Bruce, but if you don't mind, would I be able to let a Verizon representative give a shot here to check their audio as well?
Absolutely, thanks. Thanks, Patrick.
Alright, Madison, if you can unmute yourself, you should be able to uh, to respond here. Alright, I guess we're gonna have to work on that still.
It's a relatively new system. We'll get there. Keep trying, though. Thank you. Yeah, just, Patrick, just, just interrupt when you need to come back in. Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. Let's see, going down to the bottom, I, I don't know why I put it there, it's just where I put my notes. Uh, has any analysis of uh flood zone and flooding history of that particular parcel been done? That you're aware of?
Beyond the initial FEMA determination, um there hasn't, but it does, it is in the hundred-year flood zone. Um besides that, in terms of recent flooding history, I haven't heard anything to that effect.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious. I, I don't know either. I know the last two years, the lovely rainy years we had, there were, you know, evacuation warnings south of AG Creek, and I'm not sure where this is in relation to that. So, to your knowledge, this is outside of the hundred-year floodplain?
It is in the hundred-year
It's in the hundred-year floodplain.
But it is not, it's not in the floodway, and it's not in, um not adjacent to the creek. So in terms of the, the threat of flooding, um in context with the tendency to flood across the city, it's relatively low.
Okay, well, uh, in, I, that may be the case, but I do know it's fairly close to Los Barros Creek, which is right across the road of Los Barros Road. You know where, you know where I'm talking about, and I don't know if that ever floods, but whatever. Okay, I just, just was curious if somebody's looked at the flooding aspect. It sounds like that's been vetted out.
Bruce, can I ask you a quick question? Cause it's about the flooding.
Please.
I was just wondering, um, they, the applicant had the eight-inch plate? Was that deter, like, how did, I guess I'm asking, how did they determine, like, the eight-inch would be enough? Like, were they like, oh, this is where it could flood and we'll do eight inches, or how did that get?
So I definitely would like the applicant to speak to that, but um they do have engineers that addressed the design, um and it is to protect their equipment, so I'd imagine that they're, they have a vested interest in making sure that it does not flood.
Do you, do you, are you compiling a few questions for them? Cause I don't know that I'll go Oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Good job. Okay, should I go on, or you want me to wait, Patrick? Okay.
Madison, I gave you permission to talk. It looks like you're muted, so if you can unmute yourself, I think we got it figured out, but I'll be to check.
Is this issue on their end, or ours? Oh, okay.
Alright, alright, carry on. Um Shayna, thanks for your patience for, I've taught, this, there's a lot of homework here. Okay, fire and safety review. Uh, I wondered, did, did city staff, fire and safety, obviously it's gotta go through, you know, building codes and things like that. Did they review in cons, my concern stems around a two-hundred-and-fifty-gallon diesel storage in that proximity to a, electric substation?
So fire and saf, or fire safety police did look at this and they did give um their initial review a sign-off. Um in terms of reaching out directly to the county to speak to them about the proximity with the substation, um that hasn't been done yet, uh to my knowledge, so that's definitely something that um we'll look into and encourage the applicant to reach out directly to the county.
Thank you. The next paragraph on page twelve, top paragraph, you use a, another piece of language I'm not familiar with. Um, the applicant entered a tolling, T-O-L-L-I-N-G agreement with the city, and I don't, can you explain to us what that is?
Yes, so a tolling agreement, um it is a legal agreement that is entered into to essentially pause the uh one-hundred-and-fifty-day shot clock, which the city is held to um per FCC standards. So it is something where typically the applicant is, i- it's a voluntary agreement so that we can reach a conclusion that is desirable for uh the city and the applicant.
Thank you. I, I didn't, I never knew that term before. Thank you. I, I see on the architectural review, and you mentioned that they did review it and didn't wanna vote for which of those pine needles to go for, which I would have voted for one. But, but on a serious note, I, I, it says, um I think it says in the resolution that they actually did condition the project. I'm like, I'm curious what the conditions that the architectural review put on it. In the, in the resolution, it says, architectural reviewed it and, and approved it with conditions. So my question is, what were those?
I'll have to look back at the minutes, but I believe the conditions were simply that um the constituents were consulted prior to moving forward with the landscaping and the pine needle color choice.
So pretty much that the church gets involved with the final
Exactly.
decor?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Again, I go to analysis of issues on page twelve and the diesel generator with two-hundred-and-ten gallons subbase, I, I get the concept of that. Power goes out, they wanna keep people with cellphone power, and I'm sure the norm is a diesel generator. I'm just, again, wondering, and my concern, my sick mind says that diesel's gonna spill into the creek and go to the ocean and kill fish. So my, my concern was, is that the norm, a diesel generator? Do you know for, for these kind of facilities?
It is. I don't think that there really is an alternative in this scenario, um at least not in these project types that I've seen that can provide the necessary power in the event of an emergency.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Uh, and then you already answered Commissioner Ru's question about how did they determine the eight inches is enough? That's alright, that's all good. You already answered that, a- and engineers looked at it and determined that's where they wanted to be, and their incentive is to keep their material functional, so thank you for that. Okay, nether terminology, sorry, I'm a layperson. What is a Knox box?
No, that's a good question. Um so a Knox box is for emergency service access. Um so when you have a secured facility, if there is some sort of emergency um and fire or police need to get behind the gate, they have basically a code, a universal uh fob, key fob, you can imagine, and they're able to enter the facility.
Great, okay, thank you. I, again, didn't know that term. You mentioned, your final slide, I think, said something to the fact that this is considered a small installation. And my question is, is there some scale, I mean, nine-hundred square feet and sixty-eight feet tall? It's all relative, I suppose. Is there some scale of what is small and what's medium and what's large?
So, that's actually, that's a great question, because there are two kinds of distinctions here. So, um by the FCC standards, when you're talking about a wireless facility, this is actually considered a macro facility, as opposed to a micro facility. When I'm referring to um a small structure, that's actually a SEQA, that's SEQA language, um so kind of a, a different branch there, if you will.
I see.
Um but, within SEQA, the way that, there's not a bright line um determination, but they do um have a few examples. So for, um, based on SEQA precedent, uh case law, a large structure is, usually they use the example of like a shopping mall. Um they use the example of um like a warehouse complex.
Much larger footprint.
Exactly, so, um so they don't have a threshold, like I said, but they do use examples that um most people kind of can gauge, are we talking about something that um is expanding many blocks? Or are we talking about something that can be contained uh within one parcel? Is usually how planners like to talk about it.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, let's see. Already answered that one. I think I'm almost done. Everyone be excited. Uh, I think, I think that's it. If I have more, I'll come back. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Berlin. You took up a lot of our questions, though, too, so
Thank you, Commissioner Berlin. You took up a lot of our questions though too, so I think that's a good thing. Commissioner Ru, do you have any questions? No, go ahead.
I was just gonna chime in, in the absence of the applicant possibly being able to address it just with the information that we did get. It was a very large packet of information. So your question about how do they determine need? Again, I don't think that there's a clear bright line, but it looks like if you're looking at page 48 through about 52 of the applicant's packet, they kind of talk about coverage, capacity, and then anticipation basically of wireless data growth. So one of the examples that they actually did give was from third quarter 2016 to third quarter of 2017, the growth rate for wireless data was 65%. That was one of the metrics that they used to determine that in fact there was a new wireless facility needed. Whether or not that's enough in our eyes, I mean, that's subjective. But it also looks like the anticipation is that the data burden on wireless networks, because all the pictures, all the videos are just getting bigger and the files are getting bigger, everybody has multiple devices, it's very common. Cars are needing all that data streamed to their navigation services. You're talking machine to machine. All of this is in anticipation, and the understanding is that because building these wireless facilities takes two to four years on average, they have to anticipate and pre-build. I, I think that that's the information that they're able to give us. So just wanted to address that.
Thank you, Commissioner Sakerson. Did you have any, do you want to jump in on questions if you had, have any?
Uh, no, I think the, the staff report was pretty thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ru? You have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I just, I was just wanting to ask a few about the generator. Is that, that's, that's like a backup generator that in case power went down, they would, they would rely on that. So it's not running continuously. It's just activated when needed, if needed. So there's like maybe testing at certain frequencies to make sure it's still operational, but it's not like a running generator all the time. Okay, ju, just making sure on that. And then I think, I think that's the only question left that I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner, you can. Wonderful. Did we happen to get Verizon back at all? No? Okay, so it's probably on our end. Apologies for that. My, my questions really came down to like the, the questions that you had for Verizon too, like what are the dangers if this floods? And had they worked with the county on the substation at all, and is there any, you know, coordination or anything, any consequences of that? There was a another access point that needed to be added on Valley Road? Is that what you said in the staff report?
No, so they're basically, in terms of access, they are rerouting the road a little bit so that it directly lines up with their new facility. So they'll need to, for the 900-foot enclosure, right now that, there's dirt and gravel out there. So they're just going to reroute it, and it's going to be a 15-foot road up to the 900.
And that's private, right?
Exactly. Okay.
Just checking on that part. And then the residents that's within the county but outside of the city, were they notified at all?
They were not. We don't have access to that.
That information?
Yeah, I suppose I, I could have hand-delivered.
Yeah, I, I just wonder how, not even just for this project, but for any project that, you know, we're, if we're on a line like that, how do we handle? You know, if they might be within that area, but they're not technically part of the city. If there's any thing that we should be doing or coordination with.
That's definitely something that we can look into.
Other cities, other counties, you know. Yeah. There was a big sign out there though, right, that there was a public hearing for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Want to give it a shot?
Let's give it a try.
All right, sorry about this Madison, but if you can unmute yourself. Sorry. I'll let you know.
It's not your fault. All right, well, you want to, you want to take a breather?
Yeah, maybe we take a five-minute break. Probably important to get at least.
I, I would appreciate that before, especially before we go to public comments. So sorry about that. We're gonna take a little brief and break and see if we can get the intermission. There you go. See if this can get worked out. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Hey, that, hey Madison.
Hey there.
All right, it looks like we got you back. All right, thank you. Hold on, we'll, we'll come back in a minute.
Okay.
We're taking a five-minute break if you couldn't hear us.
Wait, yes, we can hear the audio now. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. I think everything's in working condition right now. So Verizon?
Good evening. Yes. Hi there. Yes, good news. We have audio now. My name is Madison Lescalza. I'm with Sequoia Deployment Services, and I'm representing Verizon Wireless for tonight's application.
Thank you. Did you have audio to hear some of the questions that came up, or do you need them repeated?
We had audio at the last, towards the end, so I did hear some of them. I can provide answers regarding the FEMA flood certification elevation for the eight-inch plate that was provided by an engineer. The diesel generator is the norm. It is required by the federal government to provide a backup generator option. A technician does come out about once or twice a month just to service and maintain the generator. However, it does stay off. It is only provided as a backup option.
Wonderful. And then, did you, or did, did you, did Verizon contact the county with the substation that's located nearby to see if there was any, you know, things that needed to be coordinated or issues or?
Yes, the substation is aware of the project as well and providing power for it.
Okay.
So they have the application for power.
Wonderful. Commissioner Berlin, was there any other questions for Verizon that you had?
I, I guess the only other question I had was my first question, which was, how did you determine that there was a demand? I, I know you demonstrated your current coverage is inadequate, and you provided some relative understanding of what demand, increasing demand looks like. But what are the specific demands that are not being met? And, and that's why you need to build this facility. Do you have current local demand that you're not meeting?
Yeah, correct. So this is, I'm unfortunately not the Verizon RF engineer. However, per the Verizon RF engineer, this is to help relieve some capacity issues for a nearby site so that all of the sites are working functionally together, so that when you're driving or using your cellphone, you're not having a dropped call when you're moving throughout. So this site was determined as a need based on the growing demands of technology.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I was just, maybe you're not the correct person to ask. Madison, thanks for being on the line. Is there any data about anticipated demand or anticipated needs? So I understand we're considering this project, but what are we, we read some information in the report about, you know, how much demand has increased in the past. Do you have projections for the future? Like, how many of these kinds of projects are we gonna be looking at? Anything like that to help our community plan in the future?
It's not so much, there's no crystal ball really for Verizon to figure out. It's just as a need arises, they try to take care of it as soon as possible so that you don't have dropped calls or lack of coverage.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other questions for Verizon specifically? All right, we're gonna move over to public comments. So if you have a public comment on this item, now is your time to speak. If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, I think, hopefully. Okay. But if there's anyone in the room that would like to speak on item 8A, right now's the time. Could you please introduce yourself? I'm so sorry. I don't think your microphone's working.
Do I have to do something?
Oh, there you go.
Okay. I'm Paula Mason from Sunrise Terrace. And we showed up to say that we appreciate all the hard work you put in. We are really grateful that you found an alternative or helped Verizon determine an alternative location for the tower. And we're very much in favor of this location, and we just want to say thank you so much for all the work you put in and all the consideration you gave. So thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Hi, I'm Carol Cranfield. I live at Sunrise Terrace, and I've also been leading our efforts with the previous location that was denied. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a statement about the demand, because we have 456 residents, we have 300 homes, and I can tell you right now that my service drops at least 10 times a month. Okay? Seriously. And we have people up higher on the hill in, on the side of Sunrise Terrace Drive that have very limited service. In fact, we have some people that wanted the other location because of that. So I can assure you, we have a lot of people in our community who, who experience dropped service constantly. I even call my neighbors next door and the service drops off. Okay? But I also want to speak not only for myself, I live on Muirfield in Sunrise Terrace, but I want to speak for our community because we are very much in support of the St. John's location. And the really positive thing, I think, for this community is that Jeff Metcalf's here, and he has stated before that those funds are gonna be put back into the community to do good. And I look at that and I think, wow, what a great, great compromise to what the other location was, which was very self-serving to a property owner. It's my understanding they may use some of the funds for homeless or whatever, but in any event, I believe our, well, I know our community is supportive because we have been in here since February. I want to just say thank you very much, and we look forward to a positive decision today. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Is there any, oh, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tony Kabliskin. I'm the president, Sunrise Terrace homeowners, and I want to thank all of you for all of your work on this. We really appreciate you, appreciate the fact that you listened to us and did what was, what was best and in the best interest of the residents and Verizon as well. So we don't, we're not against cell towers. We were just against it there. And thank you for listening to us and being concerned. That's why we love Arroyo Grande. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jeff Metcalf, and I am from St. John's Lutheran, and I would like to, along with the rest of the people that have spoken, thank this, this leadership for serving the community really well, admirably. And I love our community. I love to brag about it, and I think this is the way we can have a healthy national society as well. So again, thank you, and St. John's wants to be part of the solution, not part of the problem.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to make a public comment about this item?
My name is Gary Schmidt. I'm from Arroyo Grande. I had a three-minute speech all prepared here, but it's a bit redundant. So I want to just pick out one point that I think is relevant. There's been two applications in play for this particular cell facility. And a look at the two processes should be instructive for us all. The first application ran up against 150-day shot clock, even with several tollings of that clock. The second application has taken around 45 days to reach this stage for approval. What's the difference? It is that the residents of Arroyo Grande became involved to clearly communicate their concerns and suggestions to which the city staff and the applicant paid attention. Once the applicant understood exactly what was required in the application and what the community constructively suggested, the second application was reached, has reached this stage in one-third of the time allowed by shot clock rules. So we think that's a wonderful win for everybody. Verizon. Verizon gets a facility that closes their identified gap. The facility is being located where it's not an eyesore. And the leased resources will go to a church to be spread throughout our community as they fulfill their mission of service. So I urge you to unanimously support this application.
Thank you, Gary. Is there any other public comment on this item? Doesn't look like there's any more in the room this evening. Is there anyone online that would like to make public comment on this item?
If anybody on Zoom would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Our first speaker is Ethel Landers.
I see many of my neighbors there this evening. God bless each of you. And due to a family health emergency, I couldn't be in attendance, but I want to support their thanks, especially to two of you on the planning commission. Back on February 8th, there were about, I don't know, 35 of us who spoke before you. The room was packed, I hope you remember that. And I think it was a two-to-one vote that saved, saved our behinds. And you probably remember that that initial application was to put that cell tower 100 feet away from several of our senior citizens' homes, as well as our entrance. And I just can't thank you enough to the planning commissioners who stopped this horrible suggestion. And here we are now. St. John's, of course, wanted this location back, I believe it was in April of 2023. So this is, I guess, one of those life journeys for all of us. But I thank you so much for your compassion in preventing this from going in within 100 feet of people's homes. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ethel. Are there any other people online?
Chair, we have no raised hands.
Wonderful. Last chance for anyone in the, in the room. Okay, I will close public comment on this item. Is there any further questions or comments from my fellow commissioners?
I just have one, one further comment before we move forward. I think this whole process has been, this project, I'm really excited to see. I do have ongoing concerns, and we can talk about this when we talk about 8B, but how we move forward. Because we had a big contentious battle over this and I just don't want to see us as a city kind of caught unawares or, I'd like, I'd like us to plan forward for that. Because I am concerned about how we're, and with all due respect to speakers who say, well, I have dropped calls, I totally get that, but I would like to see data. I would actually like to see mapping and information about how these determinations get made because Verizon can just come and say, well, we have a need and then we just have to find a place for this tower. And, and we all want our phones to work, I totally get that. But I think we have to balance that with what do we want our city to look like and when, where do we want to put these things? So I know we'll talk about that during the ordinance, but I'd really like to see some, some more data around how the determination gets, that we're not just taking some big corporations' word for it, that, oh, we have this need. I'd really like to be able to have that proven in some sort of demonstrable way so we could judge that first, for ourselves, for our citizens. That, that's my only comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, Commissioner Sakrison?
I have a couple of comments. First off, I love the shirts. Think they're great. They have to be acknowledged. I just want to say that there are not that many moments sitting on this dais that are as satisfying as this one. And I'm very moved because this is one of those few scenarios where everybody's opinion and everybody's perspective was not necessarily emotional. There was justification and there was rational thinking behind every perspective, from the applicant to the city planners, to the commissioners, to the residents who were living nearby. And yet, when it came down to it, the discussion was kind, it was thoughtful, it was respectful. And the demands were asked in a way that we could move forward and work together in, in creating a compromise. And it does require a little bit of pushing, because I know it did require us to push back on the applicant and say, hey, we see that you kind of followed the steps, but you need to do better. You need to do more because it's not enough. And to see that there is a solution that as many people as I see here and I hear from are happy about, it's extremely gratifying. So thank you for showing up. Thank you for saying something. To Commissioner Roof's point about this, there are a lot of things, and it has been mentioned, our hands as a small city are somewhat tied, actually very much bound by higher authority. And unfortunately, what that means is we don't get a lot of say in how, where, when things happen. But as much as we are allowed, we should be pushing that envelope to, to exert that independence so that we can, as much as possible, shape our community the way we want. The only thing honestly that I wish we would have done with this situation, looking in hindsight and trying to learn from the scenario, is maybe having this public meeting sooner from when the application was first submitted. There was a, a period of time where, moving forward, the next application, okay, clearly this is going to need to be a discussion where perspectives might need to be heard sooner so that we don't run out of time as quickly. But short of that, I thank city staff for doing as much work as they've had to do to make this happen. Mr. Metcalf specifically, thank you for showing up then and showing up now to voice very clearly St. John's willingness to be a viable site. And I, and I think it did require that pushing and that very clear statement, we want you to call us, we want you to send us the letter. These small actions matter. They add up and keep being the squeaky wheel.
Thank you, you took the words out of my mouth a bit, but thank you. Commissioner Buchanan, do you have any comments? Yeah, I echo a lot of what was just said by Commissioner Sakrison. I think this is a perfect example of how, you know, city government can and should work. So thank you all. Thank you to the staff as well, because I know you put a lot of work into this. And thank you to Verizon, too. I think, I might get a little teary-eyed, but nerding out on that. But thank you. Yeah, I think this is great. Win, 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 win. All right, I think then at this point, we need a motion and we can move this forward.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion regarding consideration of CUP 24-001, the new 68-foot wireless communication facility and finding that this action exempt from review under SEQA. Again, this is at 959 Valley Road and the applicant Verizon Rialis. I make a motion that we approve as submitted.
I'll second.
Thank you. Can I have a vote, please?
Commissioner Berlin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sakrison?
Yes.
And Chairman Rovilia?
Yes. Motion has passed. Yay. All right. Now we'll move on to our next public hearing item. The item number is 8B, which is the continued consideration of amendments to Title 16 of the Arroyo Grande Municipal Code regarding wireless telecommunication facilities and finding that this action is exempt from review under SEQA. Mr. Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the planning commission and public. Andrew Perez, City's Planning Manager. And I'm here this evening to continue our discussion about the proposed Development Code amendments regarding wireless telecommunication facilities. So a little background about why we are bringing this ordinance forward to staff. So this ordinance would update our existing standards, which were adopted in 2017, as well as establishing a new section of the Arroyo Grande Municipal Code. So the proposed ordinance would establish permit processes for the various types of wireless telecommunication facilities. It would establish location, development, and design standards for these facilities, as well as establish standard conditions of approval. So in the past seven-plus years since these regulations were adopted, there's been numerous state and federal laws that have been passed that directly affect how we, as staff, process these applications for telecommunication facilities. So our objective as staff is to update these regulations, adopt an ordinance that minimizes impacts to the public within the confines of state and federal law. So about a month ago, at our meeting on September 17th, staff presented the initial draft of the ordinance. And while planning commission was mostly in support, it did direct staff to investigate three specific areas of the ordinance. The first being consideration for incorporating a public hearing component into the permit processing. Evaluate whether the ordinance can include a minimum distance or buffer requirement between a telecommunication facility and sensitive uses, primarily residential parcels or uses. And then finally, to evaluate the use of ambiguous terms that are contained in the ordinance and determine whether those can be, be made more specific and direct. So we've been working on that the past month. And I guess I'll begin with permits and the process with regards to public hearing. So the permit process in the draft ordinance is largely driven by the applicable shot clocks. Those could be 60, 90, or 150 days. The draft ordinance suggests that a minor use permit is required for eligible facility requests and small wireless telecommunication facilities that are located in the right-of-way. Those would be permitted with a minor use permit plot planner view. It's one of several types of minor use permits the city has available. And then similarly, eligible facility requests, small wireless facilities, as well as co-location requests outside of the public right-of-way, so on privately-owned property, would be subject to an architectural review minor use permit. The distinction between the two minor use permits is that with the architectural review permit, city staff or the director can solicit the architectural review committee for an opinion if there's some, a lack of demonstration with compliance of the design standards. So for both minor use permits, the community development department director is authorized to approve those. Applications for new, small wireless facilities and co-locations that require substantial change to the existing structure in which they're proposed would be appealable to city council. So eligible facility requests, which are considered minor modifications to existing sites, would not be appealable and the director's decision would be final. So with regards to evaluating whether a public hearing... Yes, so looking at both plot planner views and architectural views, they're both a vehicle to permit eligible facility requests, which are defined as modifications to existing telecom facilities within a certain threshold. So they're considered minor, essentially minor modifications. So also, also very little leeway within, within the law to disapprove those. So looking at whether a public hearing is feasible, the first thing staff did was, you know, just, in our experience, decide whether, or look at whether fitting a public hearing within a 60 or a 90-day shot clock is even feasible. Adding a public hearing may require review by multiple hearing bodies, which, with just, which would just increase time to that processing schedule. And there are several unknowns that could arise within that schedule. It could be issues with quorum of our hearing bodies. There could be conflicting meeting dates, holidays to contend with, staff workload, and really just a lot of unknowns that staff does not have control of. And we really want to avoid not meeting the shot clock because then the application would be deemed approved and the city loses an opportunity, opportunity to impose any site-specific conditions of approval or conditions related to design. Therefore, staff is not recommending including a public hearing for those applications subject to a 60 or a 90-day shot clock. Those macro facilities that don't fit within the small wireless telecom definition, so anything greater than 50 feet, would still be subject to a conditional use permit and the public hearing here at the planning commission. And that would also be appealable to the city council. So I don't want to say in lieu of a public hearing, but one effort we are doing, or proposing in the ordinance to open the communication between staff and the public is mailing a notice of application when, for one of these facilities, when the application's received, to all property owners within 500 feet of that project site. And that's really just to open the lines of communication between staff and the public, just to air out any questions, have a conversation that would typically happen during the public hearing or when the, you know, when the agenda is published a few days before the public hearing. So hopefully we can get out in front of, out in front of some of the issues, have a discussion, and there could be a conversation about why a project does or does not comply with the standards and regulations in the proposed ordinance. So moving on to kind of location standards and the distance requirement between these facilities, I'll start by saying that the ordinance proposes language that says that applicants shall locate these facilities that are in an area that's least intrusive to community character and values. To do this and implement that, that's a statement. It establishes preferred locations based on the zoning designation of a property. All the zones in the city are broken down into three tiers. The first tier state as being not compatible with these types of facilities. That includes all residential zones and the village mixed-use zone. So these are the zones in which residential concentration's at its highest and for obvious reasons, determined not to be compatible with these types of uses. Tier two is identified as being less compatible and includes all of the city's mixed-use zoning designations, with the exception of the industrial mixed-use and trafficway mixed-use. These mixed-use zoning designations still have a path for multifamily residential uses to be permitted. So again, not an ideal place for a telecom facility. And then finally, tier three is identified as our most compatible areas for these types of facilities. It includes the industrial mixed-use, trafficway mixed-use, our regional commercial, public facility, and agricultural zones. Those being the areas in which there's the lowest concentration of residential uses. Should an applicant propose a facility in a tier one or tier two site, that applicant must provide factual and verifiable evidence that shows a site in tier three is not available. So these can be technical reasons associated with topography or other structures that could be blocking a, you know, the dispersion of the, the frequencies. It could be landowners that are unwilling to accommodate one of these facilities. But really factual evidence is going to be, you know, actual correspondence between an applicant and, and that, and a property owner saying that they've, they've done their due diligence and have attempted to reach out to those. It could be coverage maps and demand analysis, like we just talked about in our previous, previous discussion. And staff is still working through an application checklist. So if the planning commission has any recommendations, we can definitely include those as items that we include in the checklist that would check that factual and verifiable evidence box. So when looking at the potential buffer between a telecom facility and a residential use, staff evaluated a 100, 250-foot and 500-foot buffer based on parcels that allow residential uses. With the 250 and 500-foot buffer, it really limited the available sites to the five-city center on West Branch where our Walmart... center on West Branch where our Walmart and the movie theater are located, and then the agricultural areas on Fair Oaks and Branch Mill Road. So, and I have some images of the three buffer maps. And just as a, I guess I'll explain the legend here, all the green areas are parcels that allow residential uses, so all the residential zones and all of the mixed-use zones that allow multifamily residential. The blue is the associated buffer from those green parcels. So here, the blue area represents a 500-foot buffer. And then the gray charcoal area is the area outside the buffer, and I guess what would be eligible for a telecom facility based on this buffer. The diamond, the red diamond shapes are existing locations where there are multiple carriers on a certain structure. Four of these are city water tanks, and the fifth in the bottom-left-hand corner is the Soto Sports Complex. So looking at the 250-foot buffer, some additional areas are opened up with this, mainly the Oak Park Plaza Commercial Center, where the Planet Fitness and grocery outlet are, just on the western limits of the city. Campo Rojo Grande has some more area open up. And then other areas that are in the gray are school campuses. And finally, moving to the 100-foot buffer, similar situation, expanded areas within the regional commercial, the industrial mixed-use areas along El Camino Real, just to the north of Briscoe Road, and then school areas and a greater area within the Soto Sports Complex. Again, here, just wanted to note that with the 100-foot buffer, those five sites where the majority of the city's telecom facilities are located would still not be eligible to host new sites if a 100-foot buffer was instituted. So here, the primary consideration for whether a buffer should be imposed was federal law that does not allow a city to either outright prohibit or effectively prohibit wireless telecommunication facilities through its regulations. With that being the main concern, and the relative few sites that would be eligible even with a 100-foot parcel, staff does not recommend requiring a minimum distance between any new facility and residential uses. The ordinance does have some safeguards to ensure compliance with radio frequency emissions as allowed by federal law, and also recommends design standards to minimize any visual impacts to the rest of the city. And I guess the third and final, ambiguous language that was found in the draft ordinance. So Planning Commission directed staff to evaluate instances where the ordinance was or ambiguous language was used, terms such as substantial or reasonable. There's an instance where it says diligently pursued. So staff, in consultation with the city attorney, kind of looked at these and evaluated whether it made sense to make these more specific or keep the ambiguity and some flexibility in there. And it was identified that in most cases, the flexibility is actually beneficial to the city. It really allows the city some kind of more strength behind enforcing our conditions of approval. One example is with regards to providing access to a site. The draft ordinance has reasonable access, or the city must provide a reasonable notice to an applicant to access a site. In a situation which is a dire emergency, reasonable could be an hour versus, you know, if it's something aesthetic or graffiti, reasonable could be 48, 72 hours, whatever the case may be. So having that flexibility really gives the city some leeway and some flexibility to impose these conditions and make sure they're carried out by the carrier. So in areas where city could be more specific, we did make a few modifications. For example, in the section regarding the build-out of a site, staff added a checklist of items that would demonstrate progress pursuant of final build-out. So that covers most of, you know, how we got to this point with the draft ordinance that's been presented this evening. So looking at next steps, a recommendation from the Planning Commission would allow the ordinance to move on to city council for an introduction and then subsequently adoption. Should the city council adopt the ordinance, the regulations within the ordinance will become effective 30 days after that adoption. And staff did review the draft ordinance for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, determined that it has no potential to result in the direct or indirect physical change to the environment by the mere adoption of an ordinance. It should be noted that future applications for facilities would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis for compliance with SEQA. So in conclusion, staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt the prepared resolution, recommending that city council adopt their proposed ordinance. That would amend the municipal code regarding wireless telecommunication facilities, and also find the project to be categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to state SEQA guidelines. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Questions, we'll start down here. Commissioner Sakerson?
I had a question regarding the minor use permits. Andrew, you talked about in situations where the shot clock ranges from 60 to 90 days, staff currently has the right to issue those minor use permits, I believe, operating under a policy prioritizing processing it to avoid conflicts with the shot clock, right? Can I ask you, we had a situation a while back where it was a leasing issue, taking over leases like T-Mobile versus Verizon up on that water tower. In that particular situation, it did have to come to planning because I believe it was a conditional use permit. Did that, what shot clock was that? Like, was that a 150-day one? I'm trying to understand situations that would be the 60 or 90 day.
That would have been a 90.
That was a 90.
Considered a co-location, because it was an existing facility that has telecommunication facility already on it.
Okay, so, perfect. So because that's one of the ones, it's a 90-day shot clock, it did come to planning to review and approve. So are you, am I to understand that moving forward with the new amended ordinance, things like that with the co-location would no longer come to planning?
That's correct. Yeah, it'd be an administrative decision.
Okay, but you're proposing to mail out notices to residents within 500 feet so that if they want to speak up, they can?
Yeah, and that would be mailed out when the application is received by planning staff. So, you know, within the first week, so there's still 80-plus days to engage in conversations before that shot clock were to expire.
Okay. Thank you. I, thank you for the staff report, by the way. I appreciate the location standards being tiered out to tiers one, two, and three. I feel like that makes it much more clear for the applicant to apply and to provide factual and reasonable proof. I will say, from my standpoint, I agree that keeping some of the ambiguous language is actually helpful in the situation that we just had. It was good because I was able to say, I don't believe they did their due diligence in trying to reach the other lease options. I don't believe that it was their best efforts. So just as that, as an example, I'm going to say I am inclined to agree with staff that that's better for us as a city. It gives us more leeway, so. Thank you, those are the only questions I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Buchanan, do you have any questions?
Just one, I think. Thanks for the presentation. I think everything you outlined there is very clear. Just kind of walked through an idea here of how both the lack of a public meeting there and the subjective language and the new ranking system could stand to benefit us here. So we're establishing the ranking system, requiring placement in locations with a least intrusive land use designation. Can you just maybe walk me through how that back-and-forth might go in the process here? And how, if so, that differs from banning these facilities and the lower tiers there? Because in my mind, you might say, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking about when a carrier might propose something, and, you know, tier-two is our answer always going to be, well, it needs to be in tier-one, and is that just a ban in tier-two? Or how does that work?
It's not, wouldn't be considered a ban because there's a path forward to installing and constructing a facility in tier-two. But before that happens, the applicant would need to provide that factual and verifiable evidence that a site in tier-three was not available. So, you know, there's really no sites in tier-three where they can install a facility that would close their coverage gap, and no property owner is willing to work with them or house that site, then, you know, the city would be concerned with having an effective prohibition claim and would, you know, allow that to proceed to the tier-two site.
Okay, and so just, that would allow staff with the language here in this ordinance, subjective as it may be, to verify that, you know, those lower tiers actually weren't feasible?
Correct, and that's something that does not exist in our current regulations. Our current regulations say, you know, provide coverage justification and leaves it at that. So this establishes that tiered ranking system. And then when we develop the application, based on feedback we hear, both the Planning Commission and City Council, we can, you know, create, you know, a list of items that we would need to see as verifiable evidence to justify a site outside of tier-three.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Ru?
Hi, thanks for the presentation. So just to kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Sakerson brought up, as far as factual and verifiable evidence, I appreciate the tiers. I think I'm wrapped my head around that, and I appreciate the language in the ordinance specifying that this is where we would prefer these sites to be. But when we look at factual and verifiable evidence, that's kind of what Verizon provided with this previous project, with that log that said they had contacted people, but then Jeff Metcalf was like, well, I said I wanted it, and no one talked to me. So I think there's some, I don't know, I don't want to be distrusting of cell phone companies, but I'm a little bit distrustful of, I guess it's up to staff then to weigh whether you feel like that's factual and verifiable evidence, is that right?
Yeah, and we can modify the application checklist at any time pursuant to 1670050. And, you know, it could be as specific as, you know, written correspondence between applicant or carrier and the property owner, and then it could be, you know, three times within a six-month period, or we can be as specific as we want to, and then, you know, provide contact info for who you talked to, and staff could make that call, say, did you talk to, you know, this carrier on this date, that date, or what? And so we can really beef up what we're asking for through this ordinance based on the language that's being proposed.
That's awesome. That makes me feel more confident if that's going to be like a specified production of the evidence. And then I'm kind of like a learn-by-doing person, so, and if we can't do this, totally fine. But since we have a lot of folks here who were part of the previous application, could you kind of maybe walk us through what would have happened differently with this situation if we had this ordinance in place at that time? Is that something we could talk about?
Certainly, yeah. I think that'd actually be a good exercise. So first and foremost, because the proposal for the water tank exceeded 50 feet, that would require a conditional use permit under the proposed ordinance. So we would still would have had the public hearing.
Hold on, I thought it was 50 feet. It didn't exceed 50 feet, right? Oh, it was 55. I'm sorry, excuse me, sorry. My bad.
So I don't know if the process would have played out much differently had we got to a public hearing. However, getting to the public hearing would have been, yeah, I don't know if we would have got there if we had a checklist saying, provide that evidence that you talked to St. John's, or you talked to owner of the agricultural property across Valley Road, or any of these instances, that it could have been other sites that could host this and still close that coverage gap, so.
So when the application got submitted, on the checklist, there would be, did you find it, were there any tier-three sites? And then you would say, show me the factual evidence that you couldn't use a tier-three site. And then you'd go to, then that might have cut it off right there. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, it's kind of a choose-your-own-adventure, so if you can't meet this, then you go here.
Can I jump in on just one question that goes along with that? And that pauses the shot clock too, if they have not submitted all the information, like, if all the information on the application is not there, then there's a pause, right?
Yes, we would deem the application...
So we're protected from...
Incomplete, and then that presses pause, and then, once they resubmit, staff has to reevaluate that within 10 days.
Got it.
And either deem it complete or incomplete and kind of...
Doesn't that depend on the tolling agreement?
Tolling agreements would only come into play if you're pushing up towards the end of that shot clock, so.
Anytime it goes back to the applicant, it's a pause, and the city's not being held to, the clock's ticking while the applicant's working on getting something. It's not counting against the city while they're doing their work. Is that right?
Correct, so if, you know, a carrier submits an application on day one, staff determines it's incomplete because the submittal doesn't have anything, everything it should have. On day five, then send out that incomplete notice. Day six doesn't come until they resubmit a new application. You know, if it's a 150-day shot clock, and we're on day, you know, 140, we haven't gone to hearing because there's been enough back and forth, we would, you know, coordinate with the carrier and hopefully execute a tolling agreement that would kind of pause it for however many days we can agree to.
So a pause is different than a toll. We got, we're learning all the, we're learning all the language. This is good, this is good. And then I just had one more. I know we went through this before, but just help me refresh. A small facility is up to 50 feet. So if it was in the right-of-way and it was up to 50 feet, then that would be an administrative decision. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I know in the, in the previous regulations that we had, there was like a specific mention of visual impact. Is that, is that in here? I know we just talked about least intrusive to community character and values, but do we have like a limiting, the visual impact of the facility in the new ordinance?
Essentially, those are the design standards in subsection E of the ordinance. So it talks about stealth and concealment of these facilities, the finishes, landscaping, signage, lighting. So those types of things that would hopefully minimize any visual impacts that these facilities could have on the community.
Okay, thanks. And then, I don't know if I'm not loud. I really appreciate the visual of what that, those buffer zones look like, because I'm also very visual, so it was really helpful to see that laid out. I didn't see in the report the 100. Did you guys kind of go back and add that afterwards?
Yeah, that was an accidental omission in the staff report, but we looked at it and, you know, really came to the same conclusion as the 250 and 500-foot, just left very few parcels available for these facilities.
Okay. I think, am I just understanding this correctly, that our use of the tiers kind of accomplishes that task without needing necessarily a buffer? Is that an accurate interpretation of it?
That's the intent, yeah.
Okay. And then I guess my last question is just on, is just in relation to the public hearing part of it, and not that I'm partial because I get to sit in the chair and everything, but just, we kind of all just, you know, celebrated that our community stepped up and had an opportunity to be heard and changed the path so that we can have this win-win-win, and now we're saying we're not going to have public hearings. we're not going to have public hearings unless it's the hundred and fifty day shot clock. Is that, is that my understanding?
Correct. So any, any facility that's not um an eligible facilities request, so a modification to an existing facility, uh proposal to co-locate, so add a facility where there already is a facility or um a small wireless facility. So anything beyond, above that fifty foot height threshold um is no longer a small wireless facility and would require a CUP and is subject to the one hundred and fifty day shot clock.
Okay, so if we're look, if we're looking at future macro projects, if I'm using my new terminology correctly, those would still have a public hearing. It's, we're only talking about those other, the minor use permits that would be an administrative use. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's absolutely correct.
And I, if I remember from the previous report, staff report on this item, we're going to see a lot more of those micro kind of caps on the street poles, things like of that nature. So we may not see too many more of these. So it maybe will shift more towards an administrative path. Is that?
That's correct. And, and based on my understanding, and I'm not an expert, but carriers need more but smaller facilities for five G technology. So that's why they can put these little appearances on, on light poles or traffic signals and get the coverage that they need rather than these really large macro facilities.
I think just as far as, you know, visual impact, I think that's I'm, I'm glad to see us kind of move in that direction because I think that'll solve a lot of this. Um I think that's it for me. Go ahead first.
Thank you. Commissioner Berlin?
I have no questions.
Wow. Um I think for the most part, I just want to clarify something um with the application submittal requirements in the old, um our old whatever it was called, application or process? I don't know. What are these things called? Regulation? Thank, thank you for that word. We had like a very specific list of uh submittal requirements. So I'm hearing, if I'm hearing you all correctly, we're still going to have a very specific list of submittal requirements, but we're not putting it within the ordinance so we can modify it as needed.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
We have a draft working on that and it's about thirteen pages long.
Okay.
So it's pretty onerous on the carriers and applicants.
So there's going to be things within there that, for example, like a, a needs assessment that needs to, I, you know, be proven, a justification study, I think is what it's called. Or, you know, gap coverage, coverage, demand coverage, anything like that can be put within the submittal requirements.
That's correct. So everything that we have in our existing and current regulations is, is in there.
Okay.
Plus a lot more.
Plus a lot more. Okay, so basically we're requiring of the provider a, a thirteen pages worth of things that we might have not been doing before with this ordinance.
Yeah, the, the burden of, I guess, proof is much, much more stringent um under the proposed ordinance in this proposed application checklist.
Wonderful. Okay. Um and then I did notice in our old ordinance, we had, and I can't find it because I didn't write down the page number. But we had distance requirements between the facilities, I think. It, did I read that correctly? I feel like I read it, but I can't, I can't find it. Yeah, in this old one. Wasn't there something like, I want to say it was three hundred. They had, it had to be at least three hundred feet or something like that.
Yeah, so we have um says for monopoles or towers proposed within three hundred feet of residential zone property, the facility should be set back at least fifty feet or the height of the facility.
Okay, and there's, is there's nothing like that at all within the new one? There's no setbacks whatsoever?
That's correct.
Okay. Makes me wonder if we might want, I know we looked into the two hundred and fifty and but that, I mean, that, to me, that's reading, like they could put something within, I don't know, ten feet if we really, if they really wanted to or right next to, you know, like they butted up against the property. I just wonder if we need some sort of protection in there. And I swear there was something in there about they could, had to be a certain distance apart, but maybe I'm, I'm reading, remembering wrong.
I'm looking through our draft application checklist and I want to say that there's like a building code requirement that you do need to have like an ability for these, you know, towers to basically collapse and not fall into adjacent parcels. So if you don't give me, I can give you a minute and I can take a look.
Absolutely. Yeah, and there was, I swear there was something else, like how close they could be, like or how many they could be. I might be thinking wrong. I didn't write down the page, so I couldn't quickly look at that.
Yeah, and just kind of recalling a conversation I've had with um kind of our city attorney on the matter. It's his understanding that these facilities are designed to not topple over in one piece, but rather kind of collapse on themselves. Which is might be the reason why we don't have that setback requirement, but.
I still feel like that might be needed. I'm not sure if I one hundred percent trust them to put that into place. Because I'm pretty sure that's why we had it before, because that it was, it needed to be at least fifty feet or the height of the facility. I think that was for protection if it fell down.
Yeah, if that's something that the planning commission wants to see included in the ordinance going forward, that can certainly be part of the recommendation. Staff will investigate whether that's feasible and hopefully incorporate that.
Okay. And then I think there was something in the old one as well about how many, I'm going to get all this terminology wrong, how many facilities can be on one site? Does the new one have a limit on, I, I don't think we do of how many can be on one site.
The proposed ordinance would not have a limit on the number. But I can just, based on my knowledge of our existing sites, most of our water tanks have at least three carriers on them. I think some have four. So it's really, I think it's a preferred option having them clustered in one location rather than multiple sites dispersed throughout the city, but.
Okay. Think those are my only questions. I forget if you're still, are you still looking for answers on something?
Not specifically.
Okay. Do you, did I bring up any questions for anyone else? Okay. We'll move over to public comment um on this item. Um so if you have public comment on item eight B, um now is your time. Um if you are in the room, um please come up to the podium. If you are online, um you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom.
I begin by thanking the staff for their hard work and for the stated intention that it is the goal to protect residents from adverse effects of wireless facilities. However, this ordinance has been developed without community input, even though suggestions have been presented at several city council meetings, none of which have been incorporated. A hearing such as this with, with limits on public comment is really inadequate. Public comments at the last meeting led to a request to look at three areas. Nothing has changed. First, public hearings. Has there ever been a problem with a sixty to ninety day shot clock? The clock can be paused if there's a problem. Other California cities have adopted new ordinances in which a conditional use permit is required for all wireless installations. This proposal is an approach that expedites the application process for the applicants. Second, buffers. The updated ordinance in the Pleasant Hill city has a two hundred foot setback from any parcel on which there is a private residence. What about research into other city ordinances? Language in the ordinance could specify preferred buffers with justifications required if not feasible. Third, ambiguous language. The staff recommends retaining all subjective language. However, legal counsel at the recent Slow County Planning Department hearing regarding four Verizon towers advised that, quote, "Without specific language describing what a negative visual impact is, there is no ground to stand on when trying to restrict an applicant's installation," unquote. I had some concerns about the permits, submittal requirements for conditional use permits, which I found in the old ordinance, the current one, but I understand that's in a separate document, so I couldn't see what those are. I applaud the proposal for its tiers that specify least to most preferred locations. I do note that the office mixed use zone is essentially residential because of its proximity to residences or actual residences located within this zone. I suggest that this zone be included in tier one. Legal counsel is vital. Arroyo Grande has been using legal counsel that is very lenient towards the wireless industry. This can be seen in my transcript from the February sixth hearing. Other cities have adopted, have opted for legal counsel from attorneys that specialize in strengthening codes to protect residents from the effects of these installations. Arroy Grande hasn't done this. The staff reports earlier and today have not convinced me that the proposed ordinance advances AG citizen interests. It appears clear that this ordinance advances the interests of wireless facility applicants.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paula and I'm from Sunrise Terrace in Arroyo Grande. And I, I'm real concerned about the setbacks and I do appreciate all the work that you have done and put into this. But I feel like we're going to be overwhelmed with these little five G towers just popping up all around us on phone poles and light poles. And they really do represent a health hazard. You, we're not going to be able to speak against them as a, as a community because you won't be having public hearings. And we won't have any protection against them. And pretty soon, we will be seeing, within ten years, I am absolutely certain we will be seeing the health effects on ourselves, on our children. We'll be seeing, you know, the same kind of health effects we talked about with four G. And uh their neurological effects, difficulty sleeping, anxiety, difficulty remembering, difficulty learning. So I really think that it's important right now to step up and make sure that these are not going to be near homes and exposing people to the harmful radio waves. I know we need our cell phone towers. I know that you can't deny Verizon or anybody else doing business. But we've got to find a way to make it safe. And I know that um for instance, uh fiber optics is safe, it's expensive, it's difficult to put in, et cetera, it requires maintenance. But it's safe. Can we not find combined technologies where we can do something that, that is not strictly towers? I know satellites are coming in and that is offering another technology and I'm sure within the next few years we'll be seeing other developments. So just, I feel we need to stand the line now. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I don't have a lot to say about this new ordinance, but I really want to thank you for putting this in place, especially with what we've been through. You know, it's been very stressful for our residents. There's a couple of things I want to address. Very similar to what Paula and Gary talked about. Oh, I'm Carol Cranfield with Sunrise Terrace. And that is um the visual effect. You know, one of the reasons, one of the frustrating things for me in getting started was I'm, I was going to be like a hundred and twenty-five feet from this. I open my windows every morning and there would have been a faux water tower that I would look at out of my dining room where I have my breakfast and my living room. And without the setbacks, um the same thing could happen again. In addition, if you look at, and I'm going to just give Sunrise Terrace an example, and we are grateful, believe me, for the staff and the city for working with, together with us, well, together, but you know what I mean. In front of us is Pappage Construction. It's a, it's a commercial building and it's right in front of our community again. So I guess something that I'm not familiar with or aware of is if you're putting all the, would that be a site that would be eligible for the five G smaller modules, whatever they call them, I'm not a technical person. That would affect us because again, that's a hundred feet from Paula's house. And I would, we'd all be driving by them every day as well. The other thing again Paula and Gary mentioned is setbacks, buffers, once again. You know, if Pappage Construction, for example, had a lot of these little small towers put up, we're all going to look at it and we're all going to have to drive by it. And it's what, fifty feet from the road if not less? And lastly would be um thank you. And thanks again for your vote on our Sunrise Terrace, on behalf of Sunrise Terrace. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room for public comment on this item? No? If there's anyone online, this would be your time. Um raise your hand.
Yeah, the one person that we have with a raised hand is Ethel Lenders.
Thank you.
I'd like to um ask the planning commissioners to go to E H trust dot org. That stands for Environmental Health Trust dot org. Uh I want you to think of this. Five G is small but mighty. And these things are going outside of people's bedroom windows. This is not safe. And there literally are millions of wireless antennas going in cities and around not only America but other countries. And they're all taking action because of the negative health impacts. Now, yes, I know, I know, cities throw their hands up and say, oh, we can't do anything because the Federal Communication Commission uses the nineteen ninety-six rules. Well, that was when two G was in effect. It's five G now. And I'd like you to look at other cities. There are several cities in California that have put buffers into place at least a hundred feet. My God, if not two hundred feet. You can do this if you put the effort into it. And I'd like you to ask one more thing. What is the liability for Arroyo Grande? If you don't have a buffer, you go ahead and approve these things and then people get sick, which they're getting sick all around the world from this. What is the liability? Because you'll probably look into the cell tower agreement and they don't have any liability, but the city will. So look into that, please. And please add a buffer. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure, we have no raised hands.
Thank you. Last chance for anyone in the room. All right, I will close public, public, public comment on this item and turn to my fellow commissioners to see if there's any additional comments. We, or we can just have a discussion about this if you'd like. Yeah.
I, I, I'm just going to ask city staff, what are your thoughts? What are, what are the cons here on putting or leaving in the buffer a, as it was in the existing ordinance?
I can answer that. Yeah, um I'll give it a shot. I, um, we certainly understand the concerns with RF that the um folks have, have brought up. And, and the desire to add buffers based on those. Um but I think I I noted this last hearing, keep in mind that design standards based on federal law and court cases cannot be based on health standards associated with RF. But we're just preempted from that. Staff does believe the stealth requirements and the tiering approach addresses these particular aspects. The, one other, I think we did find one other city that had provided buffers. I'm trying to remember which one that was. Wal, yeah, Walnut down in um Southern California. Their topography and the layout of their city and the zoning is extremely different from the city of Arroyo Grande. And I think as you could see from our maps, we have a heavy amount of residential zoning spread throughout the city, uh which really limits the ability to put buffers. I think Walnut maybe had lots of canyons and. I think Walnut maybe had lots of canyons and there were like kind of dips where there were hills where they could actually put towers. So I think buffers could work depending on what your city is like. We're just a little concerned about how that would work in the, based on the characteristics of our city.
Thank you. I guess in my mind, the, the buffer, while I appreciate, you know, the concerns about the RF emissions, it's less about that for me because we are already bound by state and federal law not to be able to say no, as long as it's below a certain threshold. So we're kind of bound by that anyway. It's more aesthetic. And, and yeah, like I, I don't want to go outside and see 20 feet from my front yard of the, and I get it, you know, if I'm in Tier One with all residential around me, that's highly unlikely anyway. I just, I guess I feel like our residents are asking for that, that explanation and clarification that, okay, well, specifically based on these tiers, that buffering will happen naturally. So what I'm hearing from you is really because of the way our city is laid out, there would be no more places left. I mean, essentially, if we put in a buffer zone of 100 feet or more, there's really no more places unless you're putting them at schools. Is that right?
Put simply, I think that's a logical conclusion. And, you know, I've seen other cities that have instituted and established buffers within their ordinance, but they all come with a caveat that says, if you can't fill your coverage gap and meet the buffer requirement, there's an exception process that you can go through. So it's similar to our buff, our tiered, our tiered system. Or if you can't get in three, you can go to two. But it's just, you know, a different way of doing it.
But just going back to the original question, is there a negative of putting even in the original protection, buffer protection of the 50 feet or whatever it was, the height of the facility?
No, I've, I've been thinking about that. I don't think there's anything that would prevent the city from including that in the ordinance. If nothing else, then we do have a section of the ordinance that, you know, explains how a carrier can request an exception. And there's certain criteria, and that would need to be submitted at the very, at the onset if they're going to request that exception. So we can certainly include similar language that says, you know, 50 feet or the height of a tower. And I presume that would only apply to facilities on private property rather than in the right-of-way. Because if they're going on an existing, you know, light pole, we're not going to have them move that light pole. It might not be feasible.
Right.
I, I just feel like it seems like a natural compromise, if you will, with what residents are saying. We'd like a buffer. As it stands in the current ordinance, that hasn't stopped cell towers from going up. But it does at least try to limit what locations are feasible. And like you said, there are exceptions that they can ask for, so I, I don't see the downside.
Just, just a real point of clarification. And it may not, you may not want to specify, but there's a question about whether it's from a zoning district, a residential zoning district, or from a residence itself. So if the planning commission wanted to provide clarification on that, that would be appreciated.
I mean, from, all right, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I'd say for the resident itself, residence itself, not for the zoning district.
Well, the, the way it's written previously, it says for monopoles or towers proposed within 300 feet of residentially zoned property, the facility should be set back at least 50 feet or the height of the facility, whichever is greater. So I'm not, that's what we had before.
And I can speculate why that language is the way it is. Houses can change, properties can change. You can add an ADU in your backyard, and suddenly you're within that 50-foot. So if you do it from a parcel line, it's probably less likelihood that you're going to have some sort of conflict in the future.
Then I feel like that's, that's intentional, and that makes sense. So I mean, at some point, we have to take staff's direction because planning is what you do, so.
I'm going to, I'm going to play the devil's advocate and say, I mean, things change all the time, we grandfather things in as well. If it's already there, we're not going to make them move it. We're looking at a point in time.
Right, and I guess what I'm saying is if, if, yeah, I, I get what you're saying.
Like if they put an ADU in later, and it's within, you know, 50 feet or whatever, that's kind of, they know that. It's on them.
Yeah.
But we're still, you know, we can't. We're looking at a point in time. We're not looking at also the future when we're, you know, looking at this ordinance.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's my thoughts on that.
That would still lead you to be inclined to tie it to the residence as opposed to the zoning or of the tract zoning? Yeah, I would, I would.
The property line, I think, is what's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's residential zoning versus.
Is that what?
Yeah.
The zoned property.
Yeah.
I would concur with you, Madam Chair. I understand.
So, so I'm, so I'm just getting clarification here. So what you would prefer is for it to not read residential zoning, but to read residence?
Correct.
Okay. Let me think on that.
There's a nuance there, right?
Can I, oh, go ahead, go ahead. I was just, I was kind of going to another thing, so do you want? Okay. I know it's not something we can maybe codify, but it's something I'd like staff to consider when you're making these kind of determinations. It's not a submittal requirement. But I think a lot about the equity issues involved. And because I think everyone in this room, like, knows good and well, you wouldn't put it up in Rancho Grande next to the houses up on the hill. Not you, but Verizon. I didn't mean that directed at staff. And the fact that it was chosen to put by a mobile home park with a lot of seniors, a lot of whom are on fixed incomes, just always struck me very wrong that we're like pushing right up to the, the pos, the closest possible spot, but we know we wouldn't do that to other kinds of neighborhoods. And I, so I just, as we're moving forward and, you know, technology is changing all the time, and it's going to evolve, I just really like staff to consider, you know, where Verizon is placing these kinds of things, or whatever self-carrier is placing these kinds of things. I know that's not a checkbox, but just something to, to keep in mind. Because I'd really like to make sure we're not saying, oh, well, we'll put them in these kinds of areas. I just, that really just sticks badly with me.
I think, I think just reading it, though, with the Tier One, that's not compatible, but I, I totally get what you're saying. I, I, mobile home park is within the Tier One, which I was glad to see. It, it is in this ordinance. So I'm, I'm happy to see that. It's more of the mixed use that are, and I don't, you know, I don't know if every mobile home park is, is zoned mobile home park or if it's.
Yes, they would be. They'll all have the same zoning designation.
It's mixed use. It's not.
Yeah, correctly, where the Pappage Construction building is as office mixed use.
Yeah. I mean, there's going to be lines where we move from one zone to another as well.
I, I think, I mean, speaking to Commissioner Roof, I, I understand your concern, and tend to some extent, that's, that's an equity issue across the board with a lot of different topics. In this scenario, I, I will say, if, if we've already tiered, it kind of addresses it as much as is possible. Because the fact of the matter is, whether you're saying Rancho Grande or, or, you know, you know, the Highlands or whatever, there just simply isn't mixed use there. So it's not, it's not an option. And I don't know that it would be reasonable to say that, well, they just don't care to put it there. It's just if we codify this and put it into an ordinance that that's not even on the table, then what, what other recourse do we have? So then it goes back to, okay, so do we, do we really truly like this tiered system? And if we do, that's just going to kind of be one of the, one of the default situations.
Yeah, your point's well taken. I, I think, I think having a better understanding of the tiers and how that works addresses a lot of the concerns that we brought up in the last meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I enjoy the conversation. I think it's healthy dialogue. I do think that the tiered thing is very clever. I do think it encompasses most of our concerns and yet still remains objective, which is part of the requirement that more and more of our legal ordinances have to be more objective and can't be subjective, especially when, in this case, the, you know, Federal Communications says your hands are tied unless it, there's a demonstrated health concern. And, and we've heard there are health concerns, but unless it hits those numbers, we, we don't have anything to stand on other than the design and location considerations, which we're, we're talking about. But I hear what you're saying about, that's kind of under the environmental justice umbrella, that the, you know, whatever, the more amenable neighborhoods for these to go up are where people, you know, it's, it's more mixed use, okay? So, so that's understandable. I, I get that. But, but I do think that is covered under our tiered program. I mean, so, but I do, I do still like the idea of a buffer zone, you know, that was what we were trying to get. But your map really kind of, I'm a visual learner, it kind of shows us like, well, we're really limited on what we can do with buffer zones. So I don't know, I don't know how to get around that, really. But I, I think it's all healthy dialogue that we're having. I think we've come a long way. I, you know, I still like the idea of buffer zones, but I don't know how we can do it.
I think we should, I mean, I think we're going to have to consider the original buffer zone that we had, at least as something.
Sure, I agree. It's better than nothing.
I also encourage everyone, knowing that this is a federal issue that we're being hamstrung by, to talk to your federal representatives about it. Being a city entity, you know, we can only do so much. Anyway, back to the order at hand. Is anyone thinking of how we can move forward with this?
I will venture a motion. Regarding the continued consideration of amendments to Title 16 of the AG Municipal Code Regarding Wireless Telecommunication Facilities, I move that we find this action exempt from review under SEQA and adopt the attached resolution recommending city council to adopt the proposed ordinance amending the code regarding wireless telecommunications with the addition of the previously worded setback code of, I believe it was 50 feet, or as in current ordinance language. Yeah.
With the, with the change of term to residence or with the current language as is?
I'm, you know, I'm flexible on that. I'm fine with, with the language to residence. This is going to move to, this is going to move to council, so.
Absolutely. Do, it does, is that motion sufficient?
Sufficient?
Okay. Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Can I have a vote, please?
Commissioner Sakerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Berlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
Chair Maravilla?
Yes.
Thank you all for this. I appreciate everyone's engagement with this.
I have a question. What is SEQA?
We could go into a whole lecture on that.
How much time do you have?
But we have, we have one more item, well, one more public hearing item that we have to get to tonight, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Google it.
And thank you to everyone on this side of the room who's sat through all of the wireless machinations.
Hopefully, you've learned a lot.
Thank you.
All right, we're, we'll move on to Item 8C, which is consideration of tentative parcel map 23-001 subdivision of one parcel into four with one remainder parcel at 444 Leerly Lane. Do we have a staff report on this?
We just have the memorandum that's in there, and so it is recommended that the planning commission continue the public hearing to allow staff additional time to review the proposal. The memo does say to a date uncertain and that it need to be noticed again, but I have a little bit more information about that that I can provide. And so in addition, you have some correspondence that came through in a supplemental. And the applicant has raised a few legal arguments in the letter that we received yesterday regarding a number of items, including the timelines in the Subdivision Map Act. And so we'll need to follow up with the city's attorney on, on, to discuss those items. Staff have been trying to complete the findings for the project, and we want to make sure that they're sufficient for any action the planning commission takes. Those are not ready at this time, and planning commission needs to have those to make a recommendation. We do have a special meeting on, scheduled on October 29th, which is only two weeks away. And so one option for the planning commission is to continue the item to that date so that we have a certain hearing.
Okay, so basically, just try, you want us to continue instead of, to a date uncertain to October 29th to hear this item?
Yeah, I think that would be the most appropriate. That's, that would be staff's recommendation, I think, at this point.
Okay. Is there any questions from any of the commissioners?
This is my, maybe a process question. So is tonight not an appropriate time to discuss the supplemental memo that we received? Is that something that we would discuss at the date to be continued, or is that something we address tonight?
I think that's up to the planning commission if you wanted to open the hearing, but it could be with, with the full hearing that we have.
And this was noticed, right?
Correct.
So I would assume we'd still need to be taking public comment and have any discussion that we, that doesn't prohibit us from doing it in the future either, so.
I just, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, totally.
How much we can do tonight, being that the request was to continue it. But I hate all these people to be here and not.
Agreed.
Hear them. So, okay, thank you.
But can I just add, just as far as reviewing the memorandum, I didn't have as much chance, just because we got it today, I didn't have as much chance to really like dig into, you know, the subdivision map act and what this all means. So I to, I would love to hear from everyone who's here tonight, but I'd love some more time just for myself to review and, and also have some staff direction as far as what's inclu, inclu, included in here. Is that okay? Okay?
Right. And agreed. And I won't, we probably won't speak tonight to the points regarding the subdivision map act. We, we definitely will want to talk to our, our staff and our attorney and dig deeper into those, but we'll certainly be prepared for a continued hearing on those.
And can I just ask one clarification question on the, the mem, on the memorandum from MBS? This person who's prepared this, this isn't, this isn't a lawyer. This is a planner who, what I mean is, has the applicant retained counsel? Like, is that the level we're at, or?
I don't, I don't know whether they have retained counsel. The letter is from the, the representative for the applicant.
Thanks. I think we, is the applicant here? Should we give them an opportunity to say something? Yeah, please, before a public comment? There it is.
There, okay. Good evening, my name is Michael Stanton with MBS Lanchivays. The letter was put together by Carrie Margeson, our planner. She also is an attorney, but she's not acting on behalf of the client as an attorney. But we've been through this process for four months now. We've looked at every single option.
But we've been through this process for four months now. We've looked at every single option to acquire additional right of way for Lyerly Lane, which was the original director from the city. And I don't think the continuance is going to accomplish any more right of way for, for Lyerly Lane. It's just we have exhausted every possibility to get the additional right of way. Our plan is consistent with the general plan and with the housing element. We've applied for a road exception request per the city's ordinance. Staff indicated that they would bring it before the Planning Commission with the recommendation for approval, which is what we had at our very first hearing. We've tried to address the concerns about the emergency access for both through the neighbors, through public outreach meetings, and with the fire department. The emergency access that goes through Cherry Creek has been confirmed to be public access. So this is strictly for emergency use only, and those neighbors are not going to experience any kind of regular traffic through their neighborhoods because it's solely for emergency access. We would like to have the project approved tonight with the original conditions, and the applicant has agreed with all the original conditions that were proposed by staff. And we request approval, approval based on the following subdivision map act provisions. Section 66452.1, that the advisory agency must act within 50 days. If you have a categorical exemption for SEQA, section 6652.2 says you've got 30 days after the exemption from SEQA. And then 66452.4, if no action is taken, which we've gone three months past the limit, the project should be deemed approved. We're here to answer any further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any planning commissioner have questions for the applicant right now? No. Okay. Any other questions before I turn this over to public comment? No. Okay. I, I will open up public comment on this hearing item. If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, and if you're in the room, you can approach the podium.
My name is David Palmeroy. I live at 311 Myrtle Drive. Excuse me. I'm right next door to the existing house at 444 Lyerly Lane. The project as currently drawn is different from the one that was proposed previously. The way it's currently drawn, they're proposing taking an emergency access through my property, through the gate, the closed gate right there, and installing a gate to go through to their property. The subdivision proposes five lots. This, the, the code says that if they don't have access to a publicly maintained road, they can only do four lots. So they're calling it four lots plus a remainder. The, you can do that, you can do four lots according to our code. If you have access through a, through an easement, but the easement has to be at least 20 feet wide if there are no improvements that are required. An exception can be found only if it would not detrimentally affect the safety, the welfare, the health of the public, or damage adjacent property. Approving this would clearly be contrary to the public safety because cars would have to pass each other over an eight-foot-wide dirt track over and over and over again, and the traffic from that property would be multiplied by five. If you add the possibility of ADUs in the future, obviously there would be an awful lot of traffic coming from that same property, which is currently a single-family residence. Obviously, it would be less safe than it is currently. Therefore, it can't be approved consistent with our code. Without that road being widened, without the additional easement being obtained, this must be denied and it should be denied, and I ask you to do that. MBS is asking you to decide tonight. If you decide tonight, just deny this. Just say no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can turn the air conditioning back on.
Hi, how are you tonight? It's been long. My name is Tom Griffin. I live at 325 Myrtle Drive. So I'm not right on the fence, but I'm on one of the driveways. I'll emphasize that again. Those are driveways. It's less of an issue now about the, the emergency access. We've kind of come to that agreement. But what they're proposing basically sounds a lot like a flag lot. It really does because the map, I have a copy of the map that they posted. And when you look at it, you count the number of lots, and they're trying to subdivide, again, not against the subdivision either. I'm really not all, I know something should probably go in there, but they're trying to divide this center part into four parcels and then count the existing back here. That's another parcel. And then there's another parcel up here with a house already on it. And then a house at the very end. So if you count all the houses from beginning of this lot all the way to the back, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There's four in the middle that they want to divide out and add. And then they want to put a skinny road down the side. That's a lot like a flag lot. That's what it sounds like to me. Now, I'm not an expert in this, but, you know, we see them around the city. But your own ordinances, when I read in the regulations, "Flag lots shall permit, permitted," but it says, "She'll be approved only when they conform to the, to the existing character of the neighborhood in which they are proposed to be located." Where they're proposed to be located all has streets, curbs, sidewalks, and they don't want to do any of that. Then the following line says, "The proposed subdivision in a parcel map, you can only do a flag lot when there are four or fewer parcels." That's my understanding from the city's, I, I don't know. So they're trying to, there's a little bit of a game going on with the number of parcels, I think, because it's really a much deeper lot, and you're trying to put this skinny road right down the side of it. And it goes, it starts on Cherry as a regular road and then goes to Dirt Cherry, gets very skinny, and then meanders its way to the back. And that's where the problem comes. But if I was a developer and I was picking this property, these are all issues that you would see when you picked this property. You pick this property and you say, "Should I buy this property? Is it gonna work? Can I fit it in here?" It is not up to us or the city to figure out why they can't get extra land from another landowner next, next door. That's the part that's an issue. I'm not against them putting houses in, but they've got to do it and make it like the rest of the community around it. And that's a beautiful neighborhood. They should be continuing that ride around and creating those lots on the other side, not trying to get around it with an exemption. That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robin Green, and I live next door to 444 Lyerly Lane. I have submitted my concerns in writing in more detail, but I would like to highlight them verbally tonight. While the city recognizes the need for additional housing, this project does not meet city standards, and if approved as submitted, is completely unsafe for vehicle travel on both East Cherry and Lyerly Lane. Lyerly Lane is a narrow eight-foot-wide dirt road, and currently cars must drive onto an individual's private property each time two cars are attempting to pass each other, creating unsafe conditions and damaging that property. The road access, which was deemed unacceptable by you in May of this year, is unchanged. The new map only moves the proposed emergency access from one private driveway on Myrtle Drive to another, ignoring the real problem of road access at East Cherry and Lyerly Lane. This roadway intersection is clearly substandard and unsafe for four additional residences with the potential of five ADUs and 20-plus or more cars making multiple trips per day. This road was not designed for this type of density. I hope you will deny this application until the road issue at East Cherry and Lyerly Lane can be remedied by widening and paving to the city's standards, providing safe passage for all, including emergency response vehicles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on this item?
Hello. My name is Brandon Gresham. I live at 313 Myrtle. I think my neighbors have articulated this pretty well, but I, I did want to just say that you, you really have to go out there and understand what these driveways are, because the driveway is four feet from my garage entrance. Like, I don't have a driveway other than this. And so the emergency access thing on the map is probably not really what it looks like if you actually go out there and walk it. Additionally, I would just say that I think oddly, I'm actually interested in buying one of the parcels. So I'm sort of like on a half, you know, but we really need to fix the Lyerly Road access because it's not a real road. It, it, they don't really have the easement that they need in order to make it a properly wide road. But I think, you know, if we can figure out the road situation, I think you, you guys have an opportunity to, to really make the neighborhoods look more ubiquitous. But if you can't fix the road, I, I don't really see how this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Margeson with MBS Land Surveys, and I represent the applicants for this project. And I just want to reiterate a couple of things. Lyerly Lane was scheduled for development back in 2006. The city came up with a neighborhood plan, went through the neighborhood, went through the city council. It was approved. Lyerly is supposed to be 20 feet wide. However, the city also knew that Lyerly was not going to develop the way Cherry Creek did. I keep looking for a map up there. Cherry Creek was a huge tract map, and it all came together as one. Lyerly was never going to happen that way because it's bits and pieces in, in different. So at this point in time, we have emergency access because Cherry Creek was set up to provide public emergency access to serve this particular development that was going to happen. And you can see that on the neighborhood maps. You can't see it on this one because it's so small. But they had already marked it and that they were putting in emergency access from this tract map that hadn't been built yet to serve the second portion of the development as it happened. So they're well aware of it. There have been a few other developments on Lyerly, but they, for whatever reason, additional right of way has not been acquired. We have tried, we have tried hard to get that additional width. We have a plan that will work until additional width can be obtained. I do believe a portion of the width has been attained at the corner of Lyerly and Cherry, so we're missing about 80 feet, one parcel's worth. That at some point, one of the other parcels will develop and we'll be able to get it. That's, it's the only way it's going to happen unless the city helps us to obtain that and does some condemnation or, or something to obtain that other width. It's, it's not going to happen. But our project does have emergency access, and it has private access. So I just, I, I want to make sure that that's really clear, that we meet the requirements, the findings, we meet the general plan, the housing element. We're there. Our project should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other?
Evening commissioners. My name's Byron Grant, and I live just outside of Aurora Grandi. But I've been involved in that East Cherry development since about 1999. I sold the original Stillwell property. I've sold the property 444 Lyerly Lane twice. I've been involved in correcting the, making some corrections to the eight-foot easement, which wasn't done correctly probably about 55 years ago. And I've been through a lot of the hearings. The previous owner, Nora Looney, of that property worked, has worked for me for over 40 years. The, the whole intent from the city, and I, I think I've been through on that property about five or six planners, at least, since 1999. Rob Strong was involved in trying to come up with the Phase Two, Phase Three, like where Bill Summerfield lives further on, so it could be an orderly, progressive development so that the new homes wouldn't just block the rest of the neighborhood. And that's the reason for those emergency accesses, so there is a way to get people in and out of there. It wasn't going to be major throughfare, but that was the reason for that. And Lyerly Lane, you know, could be fixed with an off-site condition, but I don't know if anybody's thought of doing that or not. It's a legal process that could be done. So I just wanted you to, I think that the development's a, a plus for the city and has a, we need some more housing, and even if it's just a small project, the more small projects we have, then maybe we've got a way to resolve the housing shortage here. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments in the, in the room? All right. Is there any comments online?
If anyone on Zoom would like to speak regarding this item, please raise your hand. I'm sure we have no raised hands.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'm gonna close public comment on this item and look to my other commissioners on any thoughts or comments.
No, my inclination is to take staff's advice and, and thank you, everybody from the public for being here. I'm sorry it was such a lengthy meeting. We, we understand the complexity of the issue, and it's not easy. It, it won't be easy. But I, I think in light of staff working with in-house counsel and still looking for solutions there, I, I would be inclined to continue.
Thank you.
Just have a question for staff. Definitely don't need or want to get into details now, but just to clarify, is the new proposal you have in front of you materially different, in your opinion, from the original proposal?
I can address that. So yes, the most recent proposal that we received changes the location of the emergency access point, but nothing else. So there's two driveways that both have emergency access easements. They'd be shifting from the southernmost to the northernmost based on this recent proposal that we saw fairly recently.
Okay. Yeah, that's the only question I have. I mean, just to provide some comment here. I mean, this is a little bit what I was worried about. Initially with this project, you know, we kind of just passed it off and said, you know, work it out. Even though it is, in my opinion, a good project, it adheres to a general plan zoning, all our requirements we have here, existing easements that were put in place long ago. And I do think it's a good project, so I am eager to hear this back on 29th is what we said.
Yeah, I think just in the memos received today, I think that speaking with legal counsel is important and necessary because if we are in non-compliance, that's important to address. That being said, there are a couple statements in this letter from MBS that concern me a little bit. Like, the project application deemed complete and categorically exempt from SEQA wasn't deemed exempt by Planning Commission, so I'm not sure at what point that was deemed exempt. But as far as
But as far as I'm aware, that's something that still needs to pass through us. So that's one of the things that, that I, I don't feel is necessarily accurate. As far as it being, um, consistent with all the general plan elements, that's not necessarily clear to me either, that it is, um, consistent with the circulation element simply because of the narrow roadway. So I'm on a, in a situation like this, I think it's important to be very objective. And as much as I want to see additional housing as the next person, I am a huge fan of it's your property, you want to divide it, you should be able to if you want to build ADUs. Great, we need housing. I, I agree with all of that. It's our job to dot the i's and cross the t's and make sure that we stay with ordinance. So, um, right now, things like the easements not lining up properly, maybe the, the emergency accesses are addressed, which is great, but regular access isn't addressed properly. That's something that I'm going to need to see checked off, um, before I can confidently vote one way or the other. Tonight, our hands are tied. It's not a published thing. We can't vote on it. It's just a matter of moving it forward. I appreciate staff, um, acknowledging that making it a date uncertain is not appropriate, um, and having a special meeting that I am happy to attend, um, in two weeks is not unreasonable considering things that still need to be addressed. I, I apologize. I know that this is not the answer that any of you wanted tonight, one way or the other, but still appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for coming out as well. Um, I know it's been a long meeting to sit through. Given the information we have in front of us right now, I don't think it's possible for us to make a decision. We don't even have the current, um, map or plan. So, um, I second everything Commissioner Sakerson said. I will say, um, since I started serving on this commission, I do go out to the site and I do drive around and see, you know, just get my lay of the land. And I live on a flag lot. I have a long, skinny driveway. I have three teenagers, so now the cars are like, uh, it's a Tetris game getting in and out of there. And when I went out to the site, um, someone was coming from the back property out, so I had to like hang out on Dirt Cherry for like five minutes till, till that car came out. So just visually, I'm having a hard time trying to figure out the Jenga of the car situation on Lyerly. But I rely really heavily on staff to give us information on what the codes say and what they don't say. So my own personal kind of experience doesn't necessarily trump what's in our housing element or our circulation element. So I don't, I don't feel like I can make a decision today, but I do want to, you know, let the applicant know. I, I'm not unsympathetic to the fact that this is just got, cans just gotten kicked down the road, and that's also not acceptable. Um, and I'm also happy to come on the 29th and let's make a decision so that we can, we can come to a resolution that, that meets the law and move forward.
Thank you.
I'm in agreement with everything that's said as well, and I, I did drive down there and had the same circumstance happen, um, except it was on Dirt Cherry, not on Lyerly. But yes, same thing. Um, we, we, we just don't have the information to make a decision tonight. I think October 29th is not too far off. I understand that this whole process has been frustrating for the applicant in terms of, you know, how long things are taking. I mean, I think if I was make, going to make a decision tonight, I would actually deny it. So I think coming back in two weeks might be a better option with knowing that we have more information in our hands in order to make a educated decision, almost. Um, so with that, I will make a motion to continue, um, this item to October 29th. I think that's all my motion needs to be. Do I have a second?
A second.
Can I have a vote, please?
Chairman Avilia?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Berlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sakerson?
Yes. Okay. So October 29th, we will be back to hear this item in a special meeting.
I'm sorry you all have to come back. I know.
Me too.
Our meeting is not, I think it's almost over. Uh, no, we don't have any non-public hearing items tonight. We have no administrative items since September twenty, September 17th. Do we have any commission communications? I have one. I want to congratulate, um, Commissioner Buchanan and the birth of his child yesterday and still made it here today. Yeah, absolutely. Um, I also, um, wanted to thank all of our first responders. I live down the street from the occurrence that happened last night. Um, so it was very, was witness to everything that occurred. And it was traumatic for a lot of people, and it was, it, I've never seen that many first responders in one place. I might cry. It was pretty awful, um, but it was really well-handled by the officials from the city. So just want to extend my thanks for that. Um, any other commission communications? Okay. Staff communications?
Yes. Um, Ryan Pejati, Community Development Director. We had, uh, a couple of items regarding the active transportation plan. Uh, there was a workshop on September 26th, uh, fairly well-attended. And then we also had, uh, a pop-up booth at the Harvest Festival on the 28th for the same item. Got some really good, uh, comments and, and walk-bys and discussion. And then also, uh, just a heads-up that we will be bringing forward the revised ADU ordinance, um, on the 29th as well. State law keeps us on our toes with ADUs, and so we have to make sure that we are updating our ordinances, um, to keep up. So we'll be doing sort of a, um, a quick approach, getting that onto your agenda and then onto city council, hopefully before the end of the year.
Is there any way that we can make sure Lyerly goes before the ADU just so we don't make them sit through a bunch of stuff again?
We have, we have direction from you for that right now.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Are tho- those the only two items at this time for the special session?
At this time, yes.
Okay. And is the, are the revisions to the ADU ordinance, is that like a massive upheaval? It's more like a tweaking or, like in terms of percentage of change of where we're at?
Uh, it is, uh, I would say more of a tweak. So.
Okay.
That's not a technical term, tweak.
I took it as one. Um, cool. Was there any other communications?
That's all.
All right. Um, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. You out there?